Good evening. The Planning Commission Meeting of April 2, 2025 is called to order. The Planning Commission Meeting is being broadcasted live on Glendale TV viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/MyGlendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire Devices using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/Agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real-time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glendaleca.gov. Can we have roll call, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Minasian?
Here.
Commissioner Nazarian?
Here.
And Chair Chirakjian?
Here. Next, we have reports regarding posting of the agenda. I believe we have two... All right, my apologies. And after that, we have approval of minutes. And I believe we have two approvals of minutes. And finally, I think we can do the original one today.
I believe so. So, just real quick reports regarding posting of agenda. The agenda for the April 2, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on March 26, 2025 on the Bullocken Board outside City Hall.
Thank you.
We can do an approval of minutes?
Let's do it.
All right. Can I have a motion for the November 6 minutes?
Some.
Okay. And then the minutes from our last meeting, can I have a motion for those?
I don't know.
Oh, second. That brings us to oral communications. I see here that we have one speaking card. Beth Brooks, can you please come up, introduce yourself, and state your address as well?
Oh, my address is 346 North Kenwood Street, Apartment 6, Glendale, corner of Lexington and Kenwood. It's my first time speaking here, and this is sort of just a general comment when I look at the commission... Where you have oral communications, that you have it before anybody has spoken about anything? That if the spirit of the Brown Act is that people should decide whether or not to come to the meeting to talk about something, shouldn't they at least hear you speak in case that triggers something in their mind that they would like to address that's a non-agenda item? So even though I'm saying this here, I know at the City Council, they offer two opportunities. One is an earlier opportunity where they restrict it to five speakers, where you could also talk about community events. And one is at the very end of the meeting. So I feel that the placement of this oral... of your oral communications should probably be put to the end. Unless you do it because you have very long Planning Commission meetings, because this is my first one, and nobody wants to stay, and you're going to kill people in the audience, and they don't want to wait. You know, I don't know what the rationale is for this. And my other request... suggestion is that I know nobody does that in Glendale and the Glendale City Government, but if you actually posted these things on the Glendale News Press or the Crescent Valley Weekly, these agendas, I think you might get more interest from people, because a lot of times, they don't go to the Glendale website. And sometimes even on the Glendale website, it's not posted in a timely manner. I'll be quite honest with you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff to look into both of those things. Just for the record, it's rare that we get oral communications, believe it or not, although we welcome them from whoever wants to participate. So let's take a look at that, and we can reconvene. That brings us to Board and Commission Member comments. Commissioner Fuentes, I believe you have a comment.
Yes, I have a special presentation. Well, 16 years...
Seventeen.
Seventeen at Planning Commission. I requested the Mayor's Office to issue a mayor's commendation presented to Chang Lee, Planning Commission, 16-plus years of service. And it just says, "We are honored to present you with this commendation in recognition of your 16 years of service as a planning commissioner. I commend your hard work, dedication, and extraordinary expertise you demonstrated in those years on the commission. You have made a significant impact and will leave an indelible mark on our community. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success." Mayor Alan Asatrian. So on behalf of the mayor, the commissioners here, and staff, I would like to present you with this...
Thank you.
Congratulation. Thank you very much.
It's been 16-plus. And I'm still wondering when I want to be kicked out.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Fuentes, and congratulations, Commissioner. So do we have any other Commissioner comments, or can we continue? Okay. I believe that brings us to old business. Item 707, North Pacific Avenue, PAPP 0043302024. And this item has been continued from our March 19, 2025 meeting. Before we get started and discuss opening the public hearing, is it possible to just get a very brief recap from staff as to where we left off and what the vote was at last meeting?
Sure. Just before I do that, so this item was continued from our March 19 meeting. The Planning Commission rules require an affirmative vote of three members for a motion when it comes to an appeal. We did not have that. That's why we're here today. One thing I do want to point out, because the item was continued, we did ask Commissioners Minasian, welcome back, and congratulations, and Commissioner Lee to watch the tapes and familiarize themselves. And we just need you to go on record to say if you have or have not.
Yes, I have watched the video.
Thank you. So we left off, the item was continued based off the Planning Commission rules from our March 19, 2025 meeting. At that time, the hearing had been closed. We did not have a motion that was successful, so the item was continued. It's at the Board's or Commission's discretion if you'd like to reopen the hearing today. I know we have many members of the public here wanting to speak on this, so we recommend that you do open the hearing. I believe that's it unless you want me to address anything else?
That's fine. And I think we should open the public hearing unless I have any objections from my fellow commissioners. And with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. We have a speaker card from the appellant, Adam Fleming. Per city protocol, we also would like to offer rebuttal from the applicant. If the applicant would like to state anything on the record, and if so, please provide a speaking card to us. If not, we'll then carry over to the speaking cards we received from members of the audience. Thank you very much. And Mr. Fleming, at your convenience.
Chairman Strachan, we did watch the video, so if it's the same content, I don't think we need to go over that again. If it's something new that they need to present, I'm happy to hear. But if it's the same presentation, then I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Okay, then let's go ahead and continue. And I just asked that we be mindful of what we discussed during the last meeting and try not to just repeat similar points. Thank you.
Excuse me. All your microphones are on. They call staff, all of you?
I believe so.
This phone was not working very well last night.
Testing?
Everybody is not...
Thank you.
Eventually, this room will be open.
Okay.
Hardly weary.
Yeah.
Are we okay to proceed, or are we waiting on technical difficulties?
I believe we're okay to proceed. Do you want to just do a test again real quick?
Testing, testing?
We did get a call, so...
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Fleming. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read off a script again. It'll go a lot easier. Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for bringing us back here this evening, and congratulations to Mr. Lee on your service award. Again, my name again for the record is Adam Fleming. I'm a resident homeowner of 511 Burchett of 13 years. I represent a neighborhood coalition who have sponsored and endorsed this appeal. I'll be brief tonight. We have a few concerns based on the last meeting we'd like to flag tonight, which weren't fully touched on in the last discussion. Next slide, please, Mr. Lindberg. To remind the commission really briefly, the facility's only entrances are neighborhood-facing doors and a pair of driveways directly across from the private homes on the west end of the property. These are considerations unique to this property. I really want to reinforce this. No other banquet halls in Glendale are configured in this manner, nor do they stand to impact the surrounding neighborhoods as this one does, including the client's current Los Filas establishment. Slide number three. The applicant's current conditional use permit, condition number one, states that the proposed west-facing patio shown here from the client's December plan submission must be omitted. In our March 19 session, Mr. Lindberg noted on record that in response to this change, the site's AB 2097 exemption would be updated to reflect the applicant has provided 60 parking spaces versus the proposed 50 when formally inclusive of this patio. Next slide, please. During the March 19 hearing, it was indicated to the commission the applicant intends to sustain this patio, re-titling it as a valet waiting area. The plans shown to the commission, this one, indicate parking will not be adjusted in the exterior west-facing patio, which is a major neighborhood noise concern for patrons gathering outside late at night, is still...
Planning Commission was posted on March 26, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you.
We can run approval minutes?
Let's do it.
All right. Can I have a motion for the November 6 minutes?
So moved.
Okay. And then the minutes from our last meeting, can I have a motion for those?
I don't know.
Oh, second. That brings us to oral communications. I see here that we have one speaking card. Beth Brooks, can you please come up, introduce yourself and state your address as well?
Oh, my address is 346 North Kenwood Street, apartment 6, Glendale, corner of Lexington and Kenwood.
Thank you.
It's my first time speaking here, and this is sort of just a general comment when I look at the commission, where you have oral communications, that you have it before anybody has spoken about anything, that if the spirit of the Brown Act is that people should decide whether or not to come to the meeting to talk about something, shouldn't they at least hear you speak in case that triggers something in their mind that they would like to address that's a non-agenda item? So even though I'm saying this here, I know at the city council, they offer two opportunities. One is an earlier opportunity where they restrict it to five speakers, where you could also talk about community events. And one is at the very end of the meeting. So I feel that the placement of this oral, of your oral communications should probably be put to the end. Unless you do it because you have very long planning commission meetings, because this is my first one, and nobody wants to stay and, you know, you're going to kill people in the audience and they don't want to wait. You know, I don't know what the rationale is for this. And my other request, suggestion is that, I know nobody does that in Glendale and the Glendale city government, but if you actually posted these things on the Glendale News Press or the Crescent Valley Weekly, these agendas, I think you might get more interest from people because a lot of times they don't go to the Glendale website. And sometimes even on the Glendale website, it's not posted in a timely manner. I'll be quite honest with you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff to look into both of those things. Just for the record, it's rare that we get oral communications, believe it or not, although we welcome them from whoever wants to participate. So let's take a look at that and we can reconvene. That brings us to board and commission member comments. Commissioner Fuentes, I believe you have a comment.
Yes, I have a special presentation. Well, 16 years.
Seventeen.
Oh, seventeen at Planning Commission. I requested the mayor's office to issue a mayor's commendation presented to Chang Lee, Planning Commission, 16-plus years of service. And it just says, "We are honored to present you with this commendation in recognition of your 16 years of service as a planning commissioner. I commend your hard work, dedication, and extraordinary expertise you demonstrated in those years on the commission. You have made a significant impact and will leave an indelible mark on our community. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success. Mayor Ellen Asatrian." So on behalf of the mayor, the commissioners here and staff, I would like to present you with this.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you very much.
It's been 16 plus. And I'm still wondering when I want to be kicked out.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Fuentes, and congratulations, Commissioner. So do we have any other Commissioner comments, or can we continue? Okay, I believe that brings us to old business. Item 707, North Pacific Avenue, PAPP 0043302024. And this item has been continued from our March 19, 2025 meeting. Before we get started and discuss opening the public hearing, is it possible to just get a very brief recap from staff as to where we left off and what the vote was at last meeting?
Sure. Just before I do that, so this item was continued from our March 19 meeting. The Planning Commission rules require an affirmative vote of three members for a motion when it comes to an appeal. We did not have that. That's why we're here today. One thing I do want to point out, because the item was continued, we did ask Commissioners Manassian, "Welcome back and congratulations", and Commissioner Lee to watch the tapes and familiarize themselves. And we just need you to go on record to say if you have or have not.
Yes, I have watched the video.
Thank you. So we left off, the item was continued based off the Planning Commission rules from our March 19, 2025 meeting. At that time, the hearing had been closed. We did not have a motion that was successful, so the item was continued. It's at the board's or commission's discretion if you'd like to reopen the hearing today. I know we have many members of the public here wanting to speak on this, so we recommend that you do open the hearing. I believe that's it unless you want me to address anything else?
That's fine, and I think we should open the public hearing unless I have any objections from my fellow commissioners. And with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. We have a speaker card from the appellant, Adam Fleming. Per city protocol, we also would like to offer rebuttal from the applicant if the applicant would like to state anything on the record. And if so, please provide a speaking card to us. If not, we'll then carry over to the speaking cards we received from members of the audience. Thank you very much, and Mr. Fleming, at your convenience.
Chairman, we did watch the video. So if it's the same content, I don't think we need to go over that again. If it's something new that they need to present, I'm, you know, happy to hear. But if it's the same presentation, then, you know, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, then, okay, then let's go ahead and continue. And I just asked that we be mindful of what we discussed during the last meeting and try not to just repeat similar points. Thank you.
All your microphones are on? They call staff, all of you?
I believe so. This one was not working very well last time.
Testing?
Everybody, you bet you, you have microphones are on.
Are we okay to proceed, or are we waiting on technical difficulties?
I believe we're okay to proceed. Do you want to just do a test again real quick?
Testing, testing?
I did get a call, so.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fleming. Thank you.
I'm going to read off a script again. It'll go a lot easier. Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for bringing us back here this evening, and congratulations to Mr. Lee and your service award. Again, my name, again, for the record is Adam Fleming. I'm a resident homeowner of 511 Burchett of 13 years. I represent a neighborhood coalition who have sponsored and endorsed this appeal. I'll be brief tonight. We have a few concerns based on the last meeting we'd like to flag tonight, which weren't fully touched on in the last discussion. Next slide, please, Mr. Lambert. To remind the commission really briefly, the facility's only entrances are neighborhood-facing doors and a pair of driveways directly across from the private homes on the west end of the property. These are considerations unique to this property. I really want to reinforce this. No other banquet halls in Glendale are configured in this manner, nor do they stand to impact the surrounding neighborhoods as this one does, including the client's current Los Feliz establishment. Slide number three. The applicant's current conditional use permit, condition number one, states that the proposed west-facing patio shown here from the client's December plan submission must be omitted. In our March 19 session, Mr. Lambert noted on record that in response to this change, the site's AB 2097 exemption would be updated to reflect the applicant has provided 60 parking spaces versus the proposed 50 when formally inclusive of this patio. Next slide, please. During the March 19 hearing, it was indicated to the commission the applicant intends to sustain this patio, re-titling it as a valet waiting area. The plans shown to the commission, this one, indicate parking will not be adjusted in the exterior west-facing patio, which is a major neighborhood noise concern for patrons gathering outside late at night, is still planned. We ask the commission, we ask condition to be made of the clients to support patron waiting possibly in the lobby to prevent unnecessary exterior disruption and uphold maximum parking lot capacity by required omission of this west-facing outdoor guest zone. Next slide. The applicant's current condition of use note, "Traffic is to be diverted away from the residential street toward Pacific." At our last session, Commission Member Nazarian expressed concern for late-night headlights in residences, particularly those like mine at the eastern end of Burchett shown here. You proposed fencing and closing off the client's west gate to mitigate disruption. This was not motioned by commission as a proposed condition, and we'd like this to consider it as a requirement of the client. This proposal would create a visual barrier from late-night activity and headlight use while helping partially shield the community from sounds of vehicle activity late at night. Slide number six, please. Were the applicants to leverage the escrow parking lot, the private business parking area adjacent to the hall at 516 Burchett, headlight disruption to the neighborhood from late-night valet activity will increase. The clients asserted they cannot make overflow commitments until the CUP is granted, nor had, as of March 19 hearing, they provided any alternative proposals. Any overflow requirements, regardless of location, indicate said vehicles will be arriving and departing from the site twice as they're courting to and from the lot. This must be considered as part of the traffic analysis required of us this evening. As mentioned in our March exhibit, use of the escrow adjacent, excuse me, use of the adjacent escrow lot necessitates all vehicles leveraging this proposed overflow area make a left turn under Burchett neighborhood out of the client's main lot, which is also in conflict with proposed condition number 21. Slide number seven, please. At the March 19 hearing, applicants submitted this illustration indicating their strategy for the onsite support of up to 128 vehicles through stacked parking. We have a number of questions in response to this. How does the venue prohibit queuing lines on the public street and maintain drop-off on lot as required by the conditions with this volume of congestion? Slide number eight. The applicant stated in their experience, patrons seldom depart at the same time. How does proposed stacked parking work if a client needs access to this car, for example, indicated in red? The blue vehicles blocking it would need to be moved, would they not? Where would they be staged? This considerably increases traffic disruption, vehicular noise, and headlight use late at night when all of this shuffling will be happening. Even if isolated exclusively to the tenant's lot, this level of activity will be considerable. All of this happening between midnight and 3:00 AM when events end. Next slide, please. The applicant's AB 2097 parking provides exemption in anticipation of our future's great new transit corridor, whose completion date is targeted in 2028, three years away. To say nothing of public transportation used by elite banquet hall clients or diminished frequency of operation when events end 1:00 to 2:00 in the morning, the anticipated exemption isn't an IOU. How does an application of this now satisfy the business over the next three years when the city's services are not yet available to patrons? Slide number 10, please. There was insufficient information whether the stated occupancy of 263 included staff, security, and valet personnel, and therefore how many parking spaces would truly be required atop the 212 mandated by municipal code prior to the AB 2097. The client's current conditions of use specify employees and valet staff are prohibited from parking along residential streets or in Fremont Park lots. How many parking spaces on the applicant's lot might they need for staff and support? And what are proposals if they are to be located somewhere elsewhere? How will the applicant ensure no one parks in the residential neighborhoods around the banquet hall, including 500, 400 blocks of Burchett, Han, Patterson, Kinnellworth, Columbus, Arden, et cetera? Will security ask patrons who walk into the lot where they parked? Will it be up to neighbors to report them? We need the planning commission to provide us the community information on how these requirements are to be addressed. Slide number 11, please. To recap, there have been many concerns voiced from the community businesses and the commission alike that this facility should not be as close to residences due to noise from cars and customers, specifically exterior patron noise when guests are leaving late at night, starting cars, headlight use, et cetera. Mr. Nazarian, again, you yourself admitted on record last time that there will be residencies who will suffer diminished welfare due to disruption. It's acknowledged, you know, that we're toying with violating the general plan of our city by doing that, if we're diminishing the quality of life of residents. To be clear, the reason we're here is because of outside patron noise and community disruption caused by a high-volume business operation and its interaction with the community late at night. Not because the neighborhood needs more parking spaces Monday through Friday during the day. We appreciate that, and we will leverage them to reduce the congestion in the neighborhood. But please, let's keep the discourse focused on what we're here tonight to talk about. We're worried about patrons exiting the building late at night making noise, operation of valet services, headlights and car noise exiting the facility, and impact to parking in the unlikely event the applicant's lot does not support sufficient capacity of patrons and employees. And slide number 12. The community would like the commission to outline the steps for their administrable action required by law to uphold the conditions and terms in the applicant's CUP. It was noted at the last hearing, revocation of an existing CUP understandably requires substantial burden of proof. However, the nature of a CUP clearly spells out terms by which the owner must follow. Deviation and conflict with these terms is grounds for withdrawal. On the hopefully unlikely event the client fails to perform their duties by the requirements set forth and the planning officer is notified of infraction by the community or otherwise, what is the exact mandated course of action set in motion for investigation, resolution, or penalty? Again, we hope this won't be required. We, I specifically want to see this business succeed. We want to give them the most chances that we can. The valet waiting area being retitled is a big red flag of a condition that's being manipulated. It was there to protect the community. We're not asking for the CUP to be denied. We are asking for amended clarity of conditions which better protect the neighborhood. That's my presentation. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Do we have any questions?
I do have a question, actually.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just to confirm, so you're at 611?
I'm 511.
511, I'm sorry, right in front of the Westerly driveway of the, okay. So, and just a question for the public here, 501 or 503 residents, are they here or they're not?
We had a 503 resident here last week, but she's not able to.
But not 501?
501.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, just real quick, so we gave the appellant, it was about seven and a half minutes to present, so we need to afford equal time to the applicant or rebuttal.
That's fine. Thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant to come and speak. I have a speaker card for Aras Parsigian from 6867. I can't read the address. Do you mind stating it for the record?
Just speak closely into the mic, please.
Hi, everyone. Aras Parsigian, thank you, chairperson, commission members and staff. All right, so just to go over some of the items that were just spoken about, so the headlights, let's talk about that. Prior use was also, see, that driveway's not going away. Any other use comes there. They're going to have the headlights. There's going to be evening operations as well, so quite frankly, that's not going to go away. And headlights usually, there's this law for brake and lamp. I'm a car enthusiast, so I'm very familiar how headlights work. Usually they're lower, so I sight, when you're driving a vehicle, there's a car behind you. It's not blinding you. So the same way, where the driveway, you're driving down the driveway, it's downhill, and the headlights go down, and as you egress out of the driveway, you pull away, the headlights won't be an issue. So I understand sometimes there'd be a higher car, whatever, an SUV or something that might just give a glare, but as far as headlights are concerned, we're not concerned because, again, we've looked into that, and we actually, I was curious, so I just went ahead and just drove by just to see how that would operate. And as far as the height is concerned, it is towards the freeway. It is downhill, so the homes are a little bit higher than the actual property itself where Rite Aid used to be. As far as the valet patio area, I guess there was a misunderstanding. It wasn't, we're asking the commission to bring back that for the reason so the people aren't waiting on the sidewalk, so it's not a public hazard or safety. So if there are cars, even cars driving on Burchett, if somebody's standing there, a car comes fast, they lose control, anything happens, I don't want patrons or guests that are in that venue hanging out on the sidewalk. That's what that portion was for. And as mentioned before, the amount of, it's 262 occupants that are allowed in the venue. So based on that, usually quarter percent, a quarter percent is the amount of parking spaces needed. If the parking spaces aren't enough, it would have triggered the owner of the business to identify a different location, but this lot is very, very large. And he knows it's enough parking space for him, so his, there's no customer service issues because whenever a guest comes to that venue, you don't want to turn them away. And just the same way that he's done his research, the city has also done that. And with AB 2097, it will be fine as far as parking is concerned. And just to clarify that for the record, we had a caller last time mentioning myself and Sam Manukin. That person is not credible whatsoever because we did get, I did get an email, and Mr. Lambert also received an email stating that he's never spoken to him. So, and for my credibility, that person that called in has no credit whatsoever because Sam Manukin does not even know who this person was. And we, he did review the video, and there's no basis whatsoever. Having said that, as far as the opening was concerned, AB 2097 is, in 2028, that's when it's proposed to be affected. Opening for the venue is in 2027. So we're not going to see any operations until beginning of 2027, just for the record. And the 12 parking spaces that the owners have decided to give out to the to the neighbors around will be with a permit system, but also, that is also revocable just the way the CUP is issued by the city of Glendale. We'll also put a restriction that if it's abused, violated, those permits will be revoked as well. So it's just not fair that he's being penalized for trying to be a good neighbor and at the same time operate a business that is very quiet. And I'm glad Commissioner Nazarian identified the traffic count for Rite Aid compared to the venue. The percentage is so low, it's in the single digits, where 1,400 operations a day compared to 50, maybe 60 at most, twice, maybe three times a week. So, and this, and any other kind of business that comes there, any kind of drive, the drive-through moratorium's not there, so it's up for grabs for any major drive-through restaurant that wants to be there. So I think this is a great project. This is a good, good business to be there, and it's, and Grand Manor is going to be a great neighbor. Thank you.
I believe we have some questions from commissioners. Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for clarifying that you were able to check out the credibility of that caller because that's one of the things I'm going to ask you.
And I believe you have a copy of the letter, as mentioned by Mr. Lambert.
I know that you mentioned in the last hearing that you will be able to pursue these adjacent properties for possibly signing parking leases. Now, I am, you know, a little bit concerned. I know that Commissioner Fuentes has a great deal of an issue with the reduced parking spaces, and so do I. I have no issues by listening into Commissioner Nazarian's comments about the traffic. I have no issues with that, but I do have some issues with that. And I don't know who's, I don't know if this was prepared by you or by the.
The valet company.
The valet company did, okay.
The one that the owner uses on all their projects, yeah.
Yeah, the available parking spaces on your pop is 55, is what I believe, correct?
Correct.
And it was reduced from 60. You know how many cars are showing here?
Yeah, almost 120 something.
Yes, yeah. So just presentation by itself, you know, I'm not saying that you're expecting this many cars.
No, we're not. That's just.
I know it's an illustration, but it does bother me, okay? And then he used it to say, "How does this car get out?" type of thing. What I'm trying to get to is that if you are in communication with your neighbor properties, I think by goodwill, you can approach them as a conditional type of agreement, saying, if, let's say, this project is approved, when that happens, can you, can we get, you know, enter into an agreement, you know, so that we can prepare for the overflow parking? I'd like to see something like that, so that, you know, it's not just that, oh, after this is approved, that we'll go ahead and engage to do that. So, you know, I personally hope to see you have that type of effort made so that. So you haven't said last meeting, well, we're trying to get 20 additional offsite parking, 30 additional offsite parking, or 10 additional, that number has been mentioned. So I don't, I don't know what that is. But if you are already thinking about.
Of course.
Offsite parking leases, I think that needs to be spelled out. As to what you're expecting, I need to know what you're expecting to sign lease if we're to approve this project. So that was my, you know, really key question, I guess, to you. And then the second item was, I know that during the hearing, I know it was not made into one of the conditions, but the mitigating measures to screen the patio area. Was that, did that become part of the conditions last night?
My understanding was that the applicant proposed the patio area as a potential solution for not having patrons wait outside, but we didn't incorporate that into the conditions of approval so that patio is not currently proposed with what we're considering. If I understand that incorrectly, I'm welcoming staff to provide additional color there.
I think some of the comments that I think was mentioned was that not only the noise factors, but maybe the light pollution, that, you know, there will be some sort of vegetation or screening mitigation that could be imposed or could be implied, I mean, applied here. So that's something that I knew, I want to kind of see if that's something that you're willing to do.
If you look at the plans, there's, well, that's going to be going up a little farther back, maybe 10 feet or 15 feet where from the sidewalk, where it's going to screen out the parking lot. And it's just going to have the two openings on either side where the driveway is for the parking lot. To address your, the parking overflow, so as far as my client's concerned, the owner of the business, they're not needing any more parking spaces. Again, the amount of parking spaces, that's 120, but you're right. Let's say we take out the center and they're able to move cars back and forth. Max, maximum they need is, let's say, 60. That's why I mentioned 50.
By code, that you are required more than 20.
Of course, yeah. I know, yeah, of course we do.
So that's what I told you from the beginning. I have issues with that.
I'm definitely aware of the code, absolutely. And again, we approached this, we started this whole application with the basis of the AB 2097, and staff has, we've gone through that, and that is state mandated, and we are, we do qualify for that. So as far as being a good neighbor, again, being a good business person, do we have interest? Yes, but at this point, last time we discussed this, the neighbors, one of the neighbors got a little too aggressive and escalated and kind of frustrated the property manager of the owner of the property. So at this point, I want to keep it at just a CUP. Let's get this through. And do we have interest in going to other lots and considering 20, 30, potentially 50 locations? Sure, why not? But we don't need that many. We, and you hit the number on the head. I think 20 is a good number, and I don't think anything more than that is necessary. But at this time, we, I don't want to mention any other places because we are, we've spoken, but I can't have people go interrupt them, and they say, "Well, we didn't discuss anything. Why are you putting in your presentation?" So that's the downfall of what we had last meeting. But now, yes, that is a concern. That is something we're going, again, we want to be a good business. We don't want to turn people away, "Oh, sorry, we don't have parking." We're not Pasadena, the structure, or, you know, any of the venues, sports venues, no, no, valet. We're not Pasadena, the structure or, you know, any of the venues, sports venues, no, no, valet is full. We don't want to do that. That's not good business. If personally, somebody comes, even they come in late, that's fine. They're still serviced. And at the same time, it takes anywhere from two to three hours when the, from the start of the event. Let's say half an hour before the start of the event and then two, three hours, a couple of hours after the start of the event as people flow in. So, as far as having a massive congregation of people trying to get in at the same time, that doesn't happen. And again, the venue owners are very much aware of this. And this is their business, so they know exactly what they're doing. And they know that this, it's not going to happen. And that's why they created a round driveway. So, and as the lights go up, it's going against the venue and it goes into the parking lot where no lights are.
No, no, I agree. I mean, I agree with other commissioners that the traffic flow, I don't think is a major concern here. Now, what my concern is, the reason I'm bringing this up is that even though, let's say, we prove this, that you're okay, we're ready to go and then negotiate. Other properties, you know, and if you haven't done your, you know, investigation or reaching out yet, other properties might be maxed out. They might not have a parking to spare with you. You don't know that.
The area is kind of not saturated, so we're good.
Well, that's, that's, that's the part that, you know, hey, I've talked to these people and then they do have this many parking. If it's required, hey, they're willing to, to enter into a, you know, dialogue with us. You know, there is a thing called LOI, you know, intent, that type of thing. That, hey, then we know that there's some parking spaces available. But sometimes, you know, these days, the developers, they'll, you know, minimize the minimum parking requirements, you know, to build. So, you know, I'm interested in, you know, if you are planning to go off-site parking, what's available? And, and I, I don't see that here.
Yeah, at this, at this moment, we don't have that information again, because we're, I, I'm aware of LOIs. I'm in a real estate business, so I do that all day long, especially on commercial. So, at this moment, again, that's a discussion that I'm going to have to have with my client to make sure that we secure that in 2027.
Okay.
We can't go into a lease or any kind of, so 2027 comes, the adjacent property sells, never know what's going to happen.
So you don't have any problem if we make it that into one of the conditions here?
Um, yeah, no problem. Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have a kind of a suggestion. Having been in the commission, almost not as long as you are. But I've seen other banquet halls that for the noise and security, they have a security guard up front. So if guests stay outside for more than a couple of minutes, they ask them politely to go inside. So that kind of eliminate, eliminates the people to stay outside, especially if they're drunk or whatnot. So for the benefit of neighborhood, so they're not going to be annoyed. So, since your client has been in the business of the banquet hall, can they provide that kind of a service?
So, it's conditioned to have two security guards. And he at minimum has four security guards, if not six security guards, depending on the event. So, their, their minimum, even at the other venue, which is about the same size, it's the same amount of security and it's always four. And there's always one at the front of the door to make sure that they're basically going to be a doorman, opening the door, making sure it closes, so it just eliminates as much sound as possible.
Yeah, that's, that's. Then the second, on, on the, as far as the parking, if my fellow commissioner remembered, we had another banquet hall about two years ago. And data, I think, if my memory serves right, data survey that a lot of guests right now use the lift and.
Right chair, yeah.
Right chair. So, because these venues are serving alcohol, a lot of guests, they don't want to dip, drive. So, as far as the parking, I don't think they're going to have any problem. Because majority of people, if I go to any kind of, that kind of wedding, I take right chair. I don't want to drive because I know I'm going to be drinking. So, I think parking should be okay with them because that kind of events normally they have right chair. So, my, my thing is if you have a security guard in, in the outside to direct people to go inside, don't hang out outside. That's the problem of the noise and all that stuff, you should be okay. On the other hand, this business is going to generate a lot of jobs for the neighborhood. So, that's something that's going to be positive for our city. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Commissioner Nazarian, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarification question. I, I drove by last night and today again. So there were at least two dozen box trees in front of the easterly parking driveway. Is that something new? You just put them up or?
It's, that's just to prevent people from going into the parking lot and parking. Because Starbucks people like to go there and occupy that space. And they throw their cups on the floor and they leave. So we try to mitigate the.
So the question I have, would you be able to operate with restricting ingress and egress from that driveway maybe after 10:00 PM? Is that something that is possibility? Have you looked into that, just having one driveway after 10:00 PM for exit?
Can't commit to it, but I don't see the need for it, but usually they do just use one. I don't know if.
The reason I'm, I'm mentioning this, I mean, last time we talked about this quite a bit. And there are three residents, 501, 503, 511, sitting right here. They're the most impacted on those driveway, if you call them the impact, obviously. And 501, 503 are right in front of the easterly parking driveway. So that could be easily mitigated after 10:00 PM. So we have the same condition as the Rite Aid condition. So after 10:00 PM, they don't see anything. So only 511 will be the only one that, you know, with your argument about headlights, which I had another thought about this. And Mr. Fleming, if in front of your house, there's a giant tree with a large high canopy, doesn't help much with the headlights. But if you had five, four feet kind of smaller trees screening, if you had any concern on headlights, if there was any concern, that should resolve the headlight issue. Again, back to the traffic with 1,400 per day, based on the report from Rite Aid, which is almost equal to 9,000 weekly. And this business is maybe 500 or 600 weekly. I agree with you on, on the traffic count is not even comparable, just purely on the number. I know some audience may not like the fact, but that's a fact, that's number. 1,400 per day, which is almost 9,000 per week versus maybe 500 or 600 per week with this business. And again, this is a C2 zone. So even if it's not this business, as you mentioned, could be any other business with any other traffic in and out. So those are the things that I was looking at, having kind of really concern on the 511, that's the only one that I can see major impact. But I think there's a solution and my recommendation is maybe you guys can get together and talk about that. Maybe some screening you can offer. Maybe that giant tree, it's no benefit to anyone. You can replace it with few smaller one, lower one, that could do that benefit and not damaging the street curb and gutter as well. So those are the things I'm thinking. And if maybe you can think about while we're talking here about that easterly driveway egress, egress after 10:00 PM. Maybe if you can think about that now and then let us know. That would be, I think that would be huge for me. I'm not saying it's a deal breaker, but it's, it's, I think it's going to be good for residents, especially 501, 503 after 10:00 PM. So everyone just leaves off the west.
Commissioner Nazarian, you know, anything that needs to be done as we move forward to eliminate any kind of heartache or problems that it's causing to the neighbors, they're going to do it. Because again, if you go to their other location, the neighbors are very happy with them being neighbors there. And it's true that they have a lot of operations in their backend as well. And which faces the neighbors. And they're very good to their neighbors. I'll be, again, he doesn't want any problems. He wants to, and the appellant is, when I heard him speak, he wants this to happen. He just wants to be not bothered by it. And if he's bothered by something and he addresses Abraham, and he will definitely work with him to make sure that that's taken out of the equation, for sure. And again, this is not going to happen until 2007, so we're not really going to see what the. It's going to take a while for him to build. And we were just discussing that because there is a lot of planning that needs to be done until the venue is opened.
And, and I agree with you about the parking as well. I have yet seen a banquet hall with a really parking problem. When I go to weddings, you know, which we do often here in Glendale, I guess. And, and you're in a business of bringing those guys in, so you're not going to let someone not be able to come in. And a ride sharing is the most common thing. And I'll make one more comment, that we don't want more parking space and more asphalt nowadays. The trend in last 10, 20 years, any master planning is less of parking. Don't motivate people to have more cars driving, let them use ride share, let them use all the other means and methods to get in. So don't give them more asphalt. That's not the trend we want to do right now. So I'm glad that it's limited to 60 parking stalls. And we don't want more asphalt than that next to this building. So that's my final comment.
Couple of quick questions. I don't know if it's been addressed, but I mean, what are we anticipating in terms of valet staff, executives and specific employees for parking? Is it going to be mandated that they're also commuting to the property? So all 50 to 60 spots are designated for valet? Or what is the process in place for that?
Majority of the staff, they do drive in together. They, again, they're, most of them are going to be Glendale residents. They already have some staff in mind. They all drive in together. If you see the operation right before it starts, car parks, three, four people jump out. And that's how it's usually mitigated, so there isn't too many cars. And they're very mindful of that. And usually from management or ownership, there isn't that many people there. Usually one or two people there and they leave, so there's no parking issue for them. There isn't that much.
What is the, what is the total number, just a range of staff that you expect on a busy night?
Usually from five to six cars are there for staff.
Five to six cars and what's the number of staff itself?
Here's the thing, when, for preparation, there's a different crew that comes in, in the kitchen. They prepare everything. That staff actually leaves and then there's the serving crowd, the staff that comes in. So that's all, and there's a lot of them that, again, they ride share. Because of, some of them don't even have cars.
But I guess, my question is pretty simple. Just from the hours of 10 or 10 o'clock till 2:00 in the morning, what is the average number of staff that's in the building at one time? Not the cars, I understand there's staff that comes in earlier in the day to assist with setup. But what's the amount of staff that's in the property?
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10 people? Okay. And the occupancy of 263, this might be something staff may opine on. Was that determined amidst the application process? Or is that strictly taking the occupancy that was previously allowed for Rite Aid?
Say it again.
The, the maximum occupancy is designated at 263 patrons. Was that the same occupancy load that was previously allowed for Rite Aid or that was part of the application?
Calculated based on the type of.
Type of building.
The building and, oh, what type of businesses.
Businesses, yeah, okay.
The city has the code and they calculate based on that. And Alan Malekian is the architect and he knows what he's doing.
I think my, I'm somewhat concerned about the parking. I, I have to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners regarding the traffic count. I don't anticipate that to be a major issue. I think some sort of mitigation factor on the driveway, being closed after 10:00 o'clock, I would also be in favor of if you guys could consider it when we deliberate further. I do think that would alleviate some of the concerns from a headlight standpoint and would also show kind of a measure of good faith. I would also suggest maintaining the 12 parking spots. I know you mentioned that there's a revocation right to that. We can maybe discuss what that would look like. But I do think that that's an important kind of token of good faith to offer the neighbors. And I guess, with that said, on the parking portion, my primary concern is not that, you know, people aren't going to use ride share. I understand that the vast majority may. But to me, just in strictly looking at numbers, 50 to 60 parking spaces for 263-person venue does seem a little bit low. I'm not in that particular business to know the exact numbers. But my question to you is outside of looking at other lots, have you considered something like stacked parking, purchasing lift?
Usually it's used, they use tandem parking. I guess that one was a little bit more exaggerated. But if you take out some of the center cars that are parked there, usually they're able to move cars back and forth. And then the center, they use as an alleyway to go around and bring out the cars.
You're mentioning the mechanical parking, right?
I'm talking about stacked parking, like you have lifts.
I don't think the city or the neighborhood would even like that. Are you kidding? It'll be New York. You guys want to go there? Let's go.
Well, I'm just asking if it was considered. I'm not saying it's a good or bad, it's just a question.
Yeah, I don't think that's feasible and expense for that will be astronomical.
Okay.
You have to fill out a card. Okay, yeah, he might come and she can, he can fill it out later. Is that fine?
So, back to this parking situation, yes, that diagram is a bit exaggerated. That's only to show physically how many cars can be parked there. So, to our defense, we've been doing this for six years. We, we own, the current cars we park is a car wash, which is pretty much identical to this exact space. So, it's been working for six years. There's one driveway, there's about 10 guys that work valet. They know how to maneuver the system, so no cars ever get stuck in a position. And we're not the only ones, this is Los Angeles, everyone has valet. There's all sorts of restaurants and they all maneuver the same way, guys. And we're not doing anything that other people don't do. It's just a simple tactic. Valet knows what they're doing, this is the max, which we're never going to, that numbers you guys are seeing on the diagram, we're never going to use. This is just to show physically how many cars can be parked. Realistically speaking, maximum we're going to have about 80 cars. That's our, that's if we hit the maximum number of people coming to the venue. So we're trying to show you guys a maximum. So, I mean, for your, your sake and the neighbor's sake. So, just to see on a bad day, what's, what we can do. But then on an average, we're never going to see these numbers. This is just to showcase what's going on. So I just want to make that clear. And parking is always tandem, guys. There's never cars parked the way you're supposed to park on a event like this.
No, thank you for sharing that. I believe that, yeah, for six years, you've been very successful doing that. And also mentioning that your expectation, based on the number of, I mean, based on your experience of operating this venue, that you're expecting 80 max.
That's max.
Yeah, max. So, but we always have to prepare for the max.
Of course, of course.
So, thank you for sharing that number because that, and then, you know, your willingness also to, to work towards that. I think that's what I was able to verify. So, while you're trying to make it work for your business, this is a good business. And then I don't think the neighbors, you know, have any issues with your nature of business or your business coming in. It's just that, you know, how do we coexist without really bothering each other? And that's one of the things that our job is to, to help you get there. And that's why I was engaged in, in this conversation with the parking issues. Okay?
Just trying to clarify as much as I can.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for me?
Uh, no further questions at this time. Thank you both very much. Next speaker I have is Beth Brooks. Can you just say your name and address again for the record, please?
My name is Beth Brooks. I live at 346 North Kimwood Street, apartment 6. Again, this is my first time. I'm so impressed by you. I'm an old lady, he's so young, I'm so impressed by him. I think he's incredible. I, you know, your discussion about the parking, I don't know. My ex-husband is in a band and he sings at a lot of banquet halls. And so, but I don't have, you know, that experience, obviously. Assuming that, you know, you're assuming that 20% of people actually would drive to a banquet hall and 80% would use ride share. To me, it doesn't, doesn't, that's your number. Your number basically out of, you know, if it's 50 to 260, that was, you know.
I didn't, I didn't say any numbers. I said, you know, a lot of people use that.
I did the calculation, so that's what it would work out to, that it was 1/5. But I cannot imagine that you would not want to include as many parking spots as possible. When I go to the shows with him, a lot of people come in their cars. Or they have to leave because their kids, you know, they have to leave early because they, you know, the babysitter needs to leave or something. You have to, like you said, you have to at least assume the max, you know. And also at a banquet hall, and I just, I know it's just AI, but the Glendale, California typical banquet. just AI, but the Glendale, California typical banquet hall attendance is very high. I mean, usually, you have, you have events that a lot of people show up at. So I cannot imagine you would have, you know, I mean, you know, I guess more than one person gets in a car, but it's, it's usually very high when you have an event. It's not like some people show up. You have big, big events in Glendale. And I think, obviously, people's big concern is that it's a nighttime business. So even if you talk about Rite Aid, or you're talking about a banquet hall where all the business is at night. So the disruption to people because they're home at night. You know, at Rite Aid, you can have all that traffic, but nobody's home. Everybody's working. So it's a whole different animal, the way I, I, I see it. And that people are concerned that you can't police the valets. You can't police that they're going to park your car in your neighborhood or block your drive. You can't police them. You have to at least, I don't know how this all works, but I mean, before you give permission for this to go through, that the, the person who wants to open this business has to definitively, not with sort of vague promises, say, oh, we're so nice to people in the neighborhood, and we're good neighbors, and we're blah, blah, blah. Whether that's true or not, I don't, it doesn't matter. They're very nice people. But that's not the issue. The issue is something substantial and concrete and quantitative. You know, that they are providing you quantitatively, this is the number of parking spaces that we can provide, assuming that something will happen, because that's your job, to assume that, not the worst, but to assume the maximum, not to assume the minimum, which is, again, not quantifiable. It's based upon, well, my experience is, well, maybe your experience is not that they're down the block. You know, that, that people are literally right across from this thing, that you build a retaining wall, or trees, or whatever it is. But that's just my very uneducated opinion at this point, from what I see, that you have to, you know, just quantify.
Thank you very much. I don't think I mentioned it, but I'd like to give everyone three minutes to speak. And I just ask that if you spoke at the last planning commission meeting, you try not to repeat the exact same points that we already deliberated. The next speaker I have is Marty Graves.
Hi, Marty Graves. I live at 521 Burchett in Glendale, and I have lived there since 1968, and I've owned the property since 1978. I'm afraid that I am going to be repeating a little bit, but we have concerns, ongoing concerns, that were not addressed at the last hearing. And many things have been brought up at both hearings prior to this that are unresolved. So there is going to be some repetition, particularly with what Mr. Fleming said. I was totally stunned, actually, when they, when the appellate's appeal was rejected, the only condition being that the applicant should allow 12, up to 12 parking places for neighbors to use Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. I know this did not pass as it required three votes, but I'm surprised that some additional conditions were not suggested. And these are the ongoing conditions that we're concerned about. The, the concerns about insufficient parking with no overflow plans have obviously been presented to you. I don't know about the call from the neighbor that called in about Sam Manukian's situation, but I do know that there was a letter, there was a 70-page document that was part of one of your reports, where all of the letters from previous people who had spoken, or people that had called in, were printed there for public, for the public to see. And there was a letter from Sam Manukian, and he stated, he is the assets manager of the escrow building at 516, and he, he said in his letter that he had, because they had mentioned it, because the applicants had mentioned using that property, leasing that property, the parking lot, he said that he had talked to the owner about it, and the owner had said he would never, ever consider leasing his parking lot. There was discussion about clarifying this issue of insufficient parking at the next meeting, but this was not in the motion. There was no information on where staff, including security and valet parking, attendants would park. There was insufficient information on whether the occupancy of 263 included staff, security, and valet personnel, and therefore, how many parking, parking spaces would really be needed. Current conditions, you, current conditions of use specify that employees, valet staff, and visitors are prohibited from parking along residential streets in the Fremont, or in the Fremont Park lots. We also have no idea how the reopening of Fremont Park with its expanded facilities will affect this situation. In addition to this, we now have the issue of a proposed drive-through at the site of the Acapulco Restaurant, which is right across the street from the proposed banquet hall. The city council received more than 100 emails and dozens of speakers from our neighborhood and adjacent areas who spoke out in opposition to that, to that proposed drive-through. And even though this project is not part of the copy, it will undoubtedly affect the applicant's business and have a negative effect on the quality of our lives. There was insufficient information on the stacked parking and how in a car, I still don't understand, even after they've talked about it. How is a car in the middle with someone in front of them going to get out if they need to, to, to get out of there earlier than other people?
Thank you, Ms. Graves. Next speaker card I have is for Betty McBride.
Good evening. My name is Betty McBride, and I live at 524 Burchett Street. And at the last meeting, you had mentioned something about the traffic study. And I just wanted to point out a few things. With Rite Aid being there, their hours are like 8:00 to 10:00, normal working hours, people coming and going, not this rush of people coming to an event, in and out, no big problem. But I don't think you're aware that there is an acoustic problem, because my house, here's Rite Aid, and then here's the escrow building next to it with the parking lot, and I'm the first house. And so, when Rite Aid was there, people, when they would close, many people would stay there and visit, and it was like a little meeting place. And I could hear their conversations perfectly from my, my yard. The acoustics were so good because there was all this blank space. So I could hear them when they get in their cars to go, and I could hear all their conversations. And, you know, there was a lot of young men would meet there, and they'd be talking about their cars and what have you. I just wanted to point you out that, that the acoustics there, if you have this large event, you can imagine what it'll be like when all of these people come, what we will hear. And when they get ready to leave at late at night, between 12:00 or 2:00 o'clock, whatever, and of course, they usually hang around, they've had drinks, and they're out there talking, and there'll be all of this commotion going on. So that late at night, we, not only myself, but all the people across the street, that noise bounces over. And so we will be very impacted by all of that, just to point that out to you. The other thing I wanted to point out was that the hours that they have are so irregular. I mean, this is not a, a typical business. Like the lady said, it's really a nighttime thing. And so, you know, their, their hours are from 9:00 in the morning to 2:00 at night, from Sunday to Thursday, and then Friday night and Saturday night, it's also 9:00 to 2:00 a.m. So the, these are hours that, in a neighborhood, you're not used to this kind of activity going on. And so they don't, it's not a normal business hours. So we will never know, any, any time of the day, we'll never really know what our day will be like because we won't know what events will be occurring. There, there might be two events that week, or three events. We don't know. So to me, that is not a very comfortable feeling, and I know that our expectations with that, it'll just, we'll always be wondering. So I just wanted to point you out that it was very irregular. And then the security guards, right, and I really think they only have two security guards, and now I understand they're armed. And this is concerning to me, because people come dressed up, and they have all their nice jewelry, and, and their watches, and what have you. And who knows? There might be a criminal intent, and you only have two, two security guards. They're armed, and I don't know. That doesn't sound very safe to me.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Next, I have Scott Gerhardt.
Hi, my name is Scott Gerhardt. I want to thank the ladies and gentlemen of the commission. How in the world do we even get to this point? Can we use some common sense here? Common sense number one, what good is, what good is Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 6:00 parking for residents? We need places to park when we get home, not while we're at work. This is basically a bribe to the neighbors to give some form of compensation for the issues it will cause, so they'll, they'll keep quiet in this process. This doesn't even help. And on top, he's trying to slap all sorts of restrictions on it. Yeah, some concession. Thanks for something completely useless. Common sense point number two, what would you think if you had your home at 501, 503, or 511 Burchett for many decades? This area was originally supposed to be a residential area when first cleared for the Ventura Freeway. There's a reason for that. In 1976, it was changed to allow for recalenders, which was absolutely a benefit to the community, a very justifiable change. In 2017, the zoning changed it specifically for a Rite Aid. This change was fine because the Rite Aid had no threat of being a public nuisance, and was also a benefit to the community. But with it gone, it left a ridiculous loophole that apparently a banquet hall is trying to exploit, which very clearly is a threat to be a public nuisance. I mean, reasonably, zoning should change back if it's not going to be a Rite Aid. This isn't why it was changed in the first place, and I know that that's a zoning commission, but it's just another reason why this shouldn't be approved. Again, this really should be common sense. This space would never have had its own changed to allow a banquet hall there. That would have been crazy. Common sense point three, trying to make the point about the headlights being equivalent to the Rite Aid traffic. Headlights from a drugstore end at like 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. Rowdy drunk traffic at midnight, 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m. is completely different. And in the changing of angles in the car while exiting, absolutely will beam headlights into the residents' homes. How do you get used to a few hundred giant flashlights being shined into your home every night? I know I couldn't do it. Common sense point number four, what's the point of having a parking, parking space restriction if you're just going to ignore it? There's a reason it was there. Having only about a quarter of the parking spaces in an area that's already a parking issue. Plus, remember, staff do have to park somewhere, and, oops, there goes a whole bunch of the parking spaces. Five to six cars to deal with staff that covers 250 people? Come on, we're not buying that, are we? Within the last few years, I had a side gig working events like this. I drove in and parked there. A lot of staff do.
Can you step back from the mic just a little bit? You're popping out there. Just to kind of, just step back a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
At 516 Burchett is clearly off the table per the building owner. It even, it's even listed, being even listed as a consideration is ludicrous. The applicant can say what he wants, but he's provided zero documentation to justify that those spaces are even in his play. Just his word.
Thank you, Mr. Gerhardt.
And I want to thank you for pointing out that documentation does need to exist.
Next, I have Amber Avinez.
Hello. This is the third meeting I've been to on this topic. First of all, Commissioner Zarian, with all due respect, that 1,400 traffic stat you keep using is not correct. We had a staff member come here last time to clarify that that was traffic for the intersection. We all gasped when that number was being spoken as if it was fact, because we live there. It's just not true. I've lived at that corner for five years. I went to that Rite Aid a couple of times a week. At most, there was two, three, four people in that store. That 1,400 traffic number, and you thinking it's going to get better with this? It's just not true. So I encourage you to go back to the staff and actually dig into what that number actually is. Secondly, this letter of intention. We started this process in November with the city council, and they said, oh, we have a Plan B, Plan C, Plan D. Last meeting, the commissioner chair said, come back with something specific about what these plans look like. The third time they've been back, they have not come up with anything. It is very easy to come up with a letter from anybody in the neighborhood who has space to lease to say, we have a handshake agreement, or we've discussed this, and I'm amenable to it. But for the third time, they come here, and they don't have that. Doesn't that sound fishy to anybody? Aren't we a little suspicious of why, after five months, they can't just come up with a letter? Uber pickups. If we're saying some of this is going to be ride share, where are those Uber drivers going to pick up? Are they going to go into the stacked car mess in the parking lot? No, they're going to pick up people on the streets, adding further inconvenience to those houses that live right near the banquet hall. The staff will carpool, they all carpool, and they jump in, and they don't have cars? We're talking about a business that's going to open two years from now. Well, you can't say what the staff situation is going to be in two years, and they're all going to hop in and drive together like one big happy family. That's speculation. Armed guards? We're dealing with a business that needs armed guards? Armed guards! There's a reason that they have this, because they want to be ready in case there's a situation. To have guns in a community neighborhood, even if it's unlikely to be used? That's not okay. I don't want guns in my neighborhood. A neighbor was here last time who said, this parking situation of the couple for the, for the neighbors isn't useful in the time. If you want to help the neighborhood, if you want to be a good neighbor, open up that parking lot to Starbucks. Ease some of that traffic. If you want to have a gesture to the neighbors who are already kind of feeling pressured in that area, make a deal with Starbucks. Oh, my gosh, that would be being a good neighbor, and those neighbors would really actually appreciate Starbucks traffic being alleviated. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the last speaker card I have is for Christine King.
Hi, my name's Christine King, owner at 503 Burchett Street, so right across the street there. A lot of, a lot of good points. Thank you guys for sharing. Just wanted to point out, in terms of the traffic going in and out, again, is a very different scenario between something like a drugstore or restaurant, where there are people coming and going, a few people at different times of day, versus, you know, event start time, everyone coming for the event start time, event end time, everyone leaving at the event end time. It's really hard to imagine there not being some sort of a little bit of a backlog in the turnaround right in the street, coming and going at those peak times. You know, headlights aside. A question I also have is, I very much appreciate that the, that the business owner or planner, you know, has ways and intentions to, you know, manage the, the parking lot, and that the, that the events that they put on, you know, oh, they don't have the maximum number, you know, it's usually only 120, not 265. You know, most people Uber because they're going to drink, whatever those are. I'm also curious, well, what if that changes? What if the business model changes in another year or two? If the business, anyway, just what happens in the future? Is, is that then locked in, that whatever business goes in, they still have a maximum up to 260 capacity, and this very limited number of parking spaces? And again, maybe not as good a neighbor as the people who are currently applying for this. So I don't know what happens with that in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, is that, is, or is it repeat? If it's, you already spoke, so we're not allowing double speaking. So if it's a card for someone else to speak, we can entertain it, but, you know, that's about it on our end. No, if someone else wants to speak, they're entitled to speak, but we don't allow guests to speak twice. I, I mentioned that at the last meeting as well.
They all have spoken.
Yeah. So do we have any callers on the line?
Affirmative. We have two callers on the line.
Okay. I'd like to hear the callers.
Okay. Okay, on the line, we have a caller. Ma'am, could you please state your name and proceed, please?
My name is Jackie Gish.
Thank you, please.
My sister lives on the corner of Burchett and Columbus. I live in Glendale also, but not near this particular project. I wanted to reiterate some of the things that have already been said, but the traffic is going to be all late at night. That's a big difference between the Rite Aid. And if people are coming by Uber or Lyft, where are all those cars coming from and going to? And that will add to the traffic over and above the parking spaces. They said that there's eight to 10 people working there. I would imagine that's just inside serving staff, but it's not, probably include the valet people and the security people. So do they also carpool if there's four security people, and they're really going to come in one car? And all these valet peoples, which are four, or eight, or 10, or I don't know how many, they're also going to need to be parked somewhere. So to say that there's only five or six cars needed for all the people inside and outside staff, even if they're not employees of the, like, or a contractor, is probably way low. And so maybe 10 or 15 spaces are being used by the employees or staff. And again, that's going to just add to the mess. And again, that's going to just add to the mess of not having enough parking spaces. And really, the traffic of a whole bunch of Lyft and Ubers, where are they going to pick up? Are they going to pick up on the street? Are they going to pick up in front of people's houses? Are they going to try to go into the lot where there's already double parking in each stall? How is that all going to work? So this is the first time that we've heard this. I was at the meeting two weeks ago. And these are all new pieces of information that weren't addressed. And we did not know to address them at that time. And, you know, Adam did a great job of trying to talk about the patio that was new last time that wasn't in the original drawing. And I'm hoping that you guys aren't going to approve the valet building, which is just at a, you know, sort of outside area, because that's just going to add to the noise in the community and all of that noise light. People coming from a party are not very quiet usually when there's a lot of alcohol around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I believe we have one more speaker?
Affirmative, we have one more speaker. We have one more speaker on the line. And could you please state your name? And you'll have three minutes, please. Caller, you were on the line. Are you there? Once again, caller, are you on the line? Okay, I'm going to drop the call. There's no response.
Thank you. That would close the public hearing, and I'd like to open for deliberation.
I do have one question. Follow up from the last meeting. I know, Chair Strachan, that you asked the city attorney regarding the five-year CUP term. So, or your staff, so does that start, let's say if we were to approve their, what I think opening date is in 2027, that's 22 years from now. So does a CUP clock starts now or from 2027?
Generally, it starts from the date of the decision. And the one caveat there for a CUP or any planning entitlement is you also have two years to get building permits issued, but the timeframe starts from the date of the decision.
So then if... I see, so then if we give five years now, then they really have three years of use of that CUP?
Correct. And you know, then at that time, they'd be required to renew the request. And that's when the stuff gets looked at again and we analyze it.
I understand. Yeah, I understand the process. And the reason why I was kind of questioning that was, I know there was, you know, a suggestion of maybe for, maybe, you know, because once, once it's issued, it's very difficult to revoke the CUP. So, you know, to maybe shorten that CUP period, but now if the clock starts now, they only last two years if they're going to open in 2027. So I guess I'm going to shove that idea. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioners, any questions for staff or comments in general? Happy to hear them. Well, on that note, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I guess Commissioner Minasian and I were, were not here last time. So I guess we're kind of, I'll start off giving my thoughts on this and then, then you can entertain the motion. You know, it is in the right zone. You know, the applicant has, you know, if it's not this applicant, there are some other businesses that could come in and the similar type of, I think, problems exist here. What, you know, we're trying to do here is that, but, you know, but even though it's the right zoning, it requires CUP. So thus, we have this hearing to listen to the, to the neighbors and then see, you know, what is your, you know, I guess willingness or preparation to adopt some of these comments. And what I've seen is that, I've seen good gestures, good, you know, reaction, good preparation, other than the ones that I kind of posed about the parking issues. So I am inclined to, to approve this CUP. If we were to put in, if we're not going to shorten the CUP time on this, then, you know, at least put in some sort of a more measures in, you know, in the CUP language that, that will at least alleviate and, you know, you know, assist some of the concerns that the neighbors have.
Commissioner Minasian, Commissioner Nazarian?
I don't have anything to add. I think having living, been living in Glendale and been dealing with the Starbucks in your neighborhood, it's a disaster, you know? But I don't know if they give parking space to Starbucks, it's going to solve any problem because the Starbucks people, they come, they're very selfish people. Because I had my share of problem with them. And I don't know that's going to solve any problem. That, that, that's something that I guess you guys do need to deal with Starbucks. Yeah. So having said that, I think the business that they're proposing, it will, my personal opinion is it will thrive your neighborhood. It will not harm your, your neighborhood. Having, having said the, the security, the security, I don't, I'm not necessarily sure he's going to carry gun or not. That's not my expertise. But my experience, what I've seen in the, the other, the similar businesses, it's, it's a very, it's something that it's, needs to be there, present to, to serve the business and the neighbors. That's my two cents, but that's...
Commissioner Nazarian?
Just a couple of last comments. I heard the resident at 524 Burchett and the noise on from Rite Aid parking lot. I think that's something that hopefully if and when this approves and operation starts, you can have a discussion with the owner. I see a five-foot wall next to that office building that could have additional two feet screening to maybe solve that problem for that resident. I think that's, that should be a relatively easy solution. But just one more general comment, when we talk about Starbucks parking and using their parking, even if they agree, we have no, we have no authority asking Starbucks to go use their parking. So even if they agree, that may not even happen. And just want to make sure we bring that comment here. We're here for this project. Starbucks is an existing operation. They're under no obligation to cooperate with this business or anything to use their parking or anything at all. So just want to make sure I made that comment with that. I think I'm, I'm good.
Okay. I think I'm going to be the Lone Ranger in here. I heard a lot of good intentions, a lot of specifications, but really nothing in concrete yet to sway me the other, the other way. And I'm not going to go through the same speech that I did last meeting. I'm just going to say, I still have a problem with compatibility. While the use is allowed in the zone, I think a more neighborhood or residential type of business is more suited in that location. And knowing the history of the property, it has always been a low-key commercial uses. I would take a Rite Aid anytime over a banquet hall next to my property or close to my property. I don't care if it's 1,400 or 2,000 parking or cars going in and out. It's during the day. And they are spread throughout the 10 or 12 hours that Rite Aid is open. And getting a bulk of traffic at a very short period of time in the middle of the night is not, you know, a compatible use for the neighborhood. And that's where I'm coming from. As far as the conflict, I think the use, like I said, a less intense use will not be as conflicting as the one proposed. And parking, you may say they're only going to need 50 or 60 parking spaces. Who knows? Like I said, it's all speculations and nothing really in concrete. And I'm sure my fellow commissioners will find some other ways to mitigate some of the questions or issues, but I am not convinced that I can heartily approve the application. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuentes. So I'd like to focus on the conditions of approval and throw some ideas out there to see if we can come to a resolution. I think there are, to be fair to all of the residents that spoke today, there are some challenges that have not been addressed at this point in time. And I'd like to at least attempt to acknowledge some of those items. Starting off with Commissioner Nazarian's suggestion of having one driveway open at late hours. Maybe we decide that's after midnight on Friday and Saturday. I think that would assist in mitigating some of the light going into neighboring houses and keep the outflow of traffic more close to the corridor of Pacific and the commercial uses in the neighborhood. Secondarily from that, I think we, you know, there were some comments made as to, you know, for lack of a better term, loitering in the Rite Aid parking lot. And that was causing noise to spread to the neighbors. I think there probably should be a condition added for the security guards that are on site to either forbid people from remaining outdoors for a certain amount of minutes at one time or encouraging them to wait inside until their vehicles are ready and only exiting that portion of the property in those particular scenarios. And I think with the increased security of four or six that you're mentioning, it would be easier to facilitate something like that. And I think in that regard, at least you would mitigate some of the external noise spreading to the homes. I do want to point out that the building itself has been designed to avoid noise impacts. And I personally don't think the traffic impact is that severe, given the minimal hours that the business is in operation. The one thing that I come back to, that I am a little bit concerned about is the parking. I do wish there was an alternative plan, even if not concrete, something a little bit further than what's been proposed that was being offered. That being said, I'm not sure I'm inclined to or able to mandate that as a condition of approval. However, I think maybe just something that I could throw out there would be, perhaps three months before the banquet hall opens, if the applicant could provide staff with one or two backup options that may not be concrete at that point in time, but should at least be in the form of either an LOI for an alternate overflow lot or something of that nature, maybe we can deliberate before the motion. I do think that would alleviate my concern. I do acknowledge that, you know, you can park 80 cars. If you assume that two people are in each car, that's 160 out of the 260-person capacity, not including the staff. I do think it's unlikely that we're probably going to have more cars than that, but I do think it's important to also plan for that worst-case scenario in the event that that does happen. So that would kind of be my suggestion for some of the things to mitigate. I also want to point out that I'm personally not in favor of the exterior courtyard for the valet area. I know that's not included in this approval, but it was brought up as an alternative measure. I appreciate the consideration and I understand why it was offered. But I think it's more valuable to, to leave that out, to essentially mandate that the patrons stay inside of the building and you have security essentially monitor that, make sure they're not loitering, making noise outside. And you have kind of a more smooth egress out of the building and for them to go home. The last thing I want to add is, there was a great point made on Uber pickup and drop-off. And that should not take place on Burchett. One suggestion I would have to add as a condition of approval would be maybe an Uber pickup designated zone and signs to make it very clear to any Uber drivers that they either cannot park on the sidewalk and that they have to turn into the structure itself and wait. I'm not sure how you handle that if it's fully parked. And so that's something that's going to need to be addressed in some sort of a capacity. And perhaps that could be addressed with some of the alternate overflow parking plans. So those would be kind of the, the four or five additional conditions I would add. Otherwise, I would be in favor of approving the project.
Chair, Chair Strachan, can we get verification from the city attorney's office if these conditions could be mandated and made into condition?
Just a point on the last item request, that the entire front edge is red painted, so no one can park there. So I think that's the moot point, so we don't need to make more restriction on that. It's already red painted.
And also, I think the, the applicant has mentioned, you know, from his perspective, 80, and then he's willing to get 20 additional parking, off-site parking. So I think that number should be specifically worked into it.
Members of the Planning Commission, specifically for the driveway closure condition, I think that's absolutely an enforceable and valid condition that the Planning Commission can impose. The security guard condition, where security guards must encourage waiting inside and not allow too many people out there for too long. Other than problems of potentially enforcing this condition, because it's difficult to know if there's a violation, it's, it's something that can be imposed. I'm going to skip to the exterior valet area. Of course, that can, that can be, I don't believe it's part of the current condition. So then the Uber zone, I don't see a problem with that either. The only one I would defer to staff to answer is the overflow parking, because my understanding is that the project does not need any parking. So I would just defer to staff and then I can circle back.
So I guess the challenge with the parking is AB 2097. In a, in a way, it kind of ties our hands. It's a state mandate where cities cannot impose a parking requirement on residential and non-residential projects with very few exceptions. The project site must be located within a half mile of a major transit stop as defined under state law or a high-quality transit corridor. My understanding is this qualifies within the high-quality transit corridor, if I'm not mistaken. So we don't have the ability to really require parking. They are utilizing... I thought I was loud, but I guess not. Unfortunately, we do not have the ability to impose minimum parking requirements. It's a state mandate under AB 2097. If a project complies, it's a ministerial approval and the city is required to allow it. It's kind of like an ADU, we can only regulate so much.
Well, I, I understand that. But if applicant is willing to voluntarily provide that, you cannot work that into the language?
My concern would be if those 20, they can't get 20 spaces and they can get 18 spaces, when at the end of the day, we don't have the authority under state law to really regulate the parking that way. That, that's where my concern is with that.
Are, are we able to make it a little more open-ended and non-binding? I understand that it doesn't accomplish the same goal, but what if we considered something along the lines of, the applicant shall make a good-faith measure to attain overflow parking options for 10 to 20 additional spaces and prevent, present those options to staff three months prior to the opening of the business? That way, you're not formally requiring them to actually provide that, but you're, you're essentially adding a condition of approval that they're going to go and at least attempt to provide this as an option. But you're not enforcing it as a, you know, staff-mandated requirement?
I, I think that could work. May I also suggest imposing some kind of conditions? Because these, both the CUP and the AUP will expire. And so they have... Because these, both the CUP and the AUP will expire, and so they have to apply for the renewal. An option would be to maybe establish a performance measure of some kind within the conditions, so that when they do have to come back, we can guarantee that we're getting certain information. Maybe it's their, you know, keeping track of how parking is being utilized on the site, or something like that. It's not a common thing that we do, but it's something for the commission to consider, because we will have to revisit it in five years, I believe is the expiration. And this analysis will have to be done all over again. And part of why they were given that five-year timeframe was to allow them, you know, to open with a lot of conditions of approval, and then revisit it in that five-year timeframe, to see what impacts there have been. It's just a suggestion.
So, would the suggestion then be to include mine, and to add a separate one, essentially saying, the applicant shall provide a traffic utilization analysis upon expiration of the CUP?
I think that's more or less, yes, what I would say.
I think that's much better than the other condition, because now you're conditioning at the end of the CUP expiration. So, that's much better. That's for renewal, instead of making it a real condition for the parking.
And then I think we can still include some of that language for the three months before, but leave it a little more open-ended, to give us flexibility that we kind of have to have, or we will need.
Commissioner Nazarian, it sounded to you...
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we don't make a redundant condition on that parking in front of the Rite Aid on Burchett. That's all red painted already. So, I think any other restriction is just gonna be redundant. So, I think that that's there already.
All right. That would be related to the ride-share pickup area.
Correct. It's already, I mean, you can condition to add additional signs, maybe one or two, but other than that, I don't know what else you can do. It's already painted red. So, it's restricted already.
Do we have any additional comments from the commissioners? Or can we entertain a motion? It's atypical for the chair to present the motion, so I would have to pass the gavel in order to do so.
Just real quick, one more thing I wanted to bring up to your earlier comment about the security guards and discouraging, you know, people loitering outside. We do have a standard condition we place on all CUP and AUP application requests, requiring employees and management to be mindful of that, and to minimize those types of impacts, and discourage that amongst their patrons. It's a standard condition we put on everything. So, it puts that burden not just on those security guards, but on the owner, on the management team, on the staff that is there on site.
So, there's no sense in redundancy there, then?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Can you repeat that one more time? So, I lost it for the last part. So, what are we adding now?
So, I have four conditions of approval to add. So, the four would be, to close the driveway to only the Easterly driveway after midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. The second condition would be that the applicant shall make a good-faith measure to attain overflow parking options for 10 to 20 additional spaces, and provide that option three months before the business opens. The third condition would be a traffic utilization analysis presented upon renewal of the CUP, and that would include usage of the valet, and, you know, what occurs on Burchett, et cetera, around the site. And then the fourth would be just a sign to encourage ride-share to pull into the lot, just so there's no confusion as far as that goes.
Just, if I may, last time, one of the conditions for the motion that failed that was added, had to do with the 12 parking spaces. I don't know if the commission wants to condition that as well. We can, we cannot. It's kind of up to you if you want to include that with the motion.
I think owner agrees on that, so I believe it's okay to add, if they're still willing to help the resident with those 12 parking. I think we can add that, with caveat as they mentioned about the condition that they could be revisited, and similar to condition, you know, there's an expiration on it.
Okay.
But just one more thing. I know I started this driveway with the Easterly one, but I'm now having a second thought about, what if we leave that flexible to the operator? Because I don't know their operation, so it could be either driveway. We leave it up to them to close one of the two. At least there's some flexibility for them. And depending on resident reaction, maybe they can flip-flop. So, I think instead of restricting a specific one, let's just ask one of the two. Gives a little bit more flexibility to operator, have a little bit better chance for resident to negotiate that.
I'm okay with that.
And Chair Trachian, members of the Planning Commission, if I could suggest for the 12 parking spaces, that we add a statement at the end, you know, applicant shall offer residence, and then we can go based on radius, an order of priority, on terms and conditions acceptable to both parties, so that the operator, the owner, can set their terms and conditions. And if the resident wishes to agree to that, they can, or they don't, you know, they don't have to.
I think applicant also mentioned that they're gonna issue like a permit kind of a thing for the residents, so they have a permit to park. Not everyone can just randomly come park. I agree with that, too. So, they can monitor who's parking there.
Then, sorry, if I may, just, I want to just make a general announcement about appeals, so it's on record for everybody. So, under the appeal provisions of Title 30, Chapter 3062 of the Glendale Municipal Code, the decision today may be appealed to the city council within 15 days of the date of the decision. Again, for this item, today's date will be the date of the decision. Anyone wishing to file an appeal must use the city's online permit portal, www.glendaleca.gov/permits, for any additional information regarding the appeal process and submittal, including required fees. We ask that anyone from the public contact the case planner. Just wanted that on record.
Thank you. So...
One last question. Are we, is the Planning Commission still interested in the security guard condition?
Do you mind restating the condition?
That the security guards must encourage waiting inside for cars, and must not allow too many people waiting at one time for...
Well, I think it was stated by staff that it's a redundant requirement, because it's already inferred as one of the conditions of approval. So, I don't think we need to include it if it's already mandated, as is.
Okay, thank you.
So, a question for staff. Do we need to restate the conditions, or do we have it logged for the motion? Okay. And I would like to entertain a motion on, with that being said.
I guess I'll make a motion, upon review and consideration of all material and exhibit of the current record relative to condition use permit number PCUP 0033002024, located at 707 North Pacific Avenue. And after having conducted and closed an appeal hearing on said matter, and having received written and oral evidence and testimony, the Planning Commission hereby sustains the Planning Hearing Officer's decision to approve the condition use permit to allow the establishment of a new banquet hall located in the C2 Community Commercial Zone, based on all of the findings set forth in the Planning Hearing Officer's decision letter of December 12, 2024, which the Planning Commission hereby adopts. And with all the conditions set forth in such decision letter, in addition to revise and modify additional four conditions tonight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Minasian?
Yes.
Commissioner Nazarian?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
Abstained.
That's three votes in the affirmative, so the motion...
I didn't, I didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair Trachian?
Yes.
Okay. That's three votes in the affirmative. I got ahead of myself there, sorry. So, the motion does pass at this point. So, the item is concluded.
Thank you. Next, we have, any community development department updates from staff?
First, we'd like to welcome back Commissioner Minasian. He was reappointed recently, so welcome back.
Thank you.
We are thankful for everyone on the commission, and the service that you provide to us and the city. As far as updates, we do have an item scheduled for the April 16 meeting. Long Range Planning Staff will be presenting an update on the annual progress report, on the status of the general plan, and housing production to the Planning Commission. So, that'll be coming to you April 16. And just a general announcement, we are in the process of updating our general plan. For more information on the different elements of the general plan, and the updates and their status, please check the city's website at www.glendaleplan.com, or you can contact Long Range Planning Staff at 818-548-2140. Last night, the city council did adopt the safety element, which you heard earlier this year. So, that was done. And that's kind of it for us.
Thank you.
So, if you can kindly let me know when my last meeting will be, so I can prepare my farewell speech?
I will let you know as soon as the city clerk's office lets me know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Adjourned.
Thank you.